Welcome everyone. It's 6:00 PM and welcome beautiful downtown Dennison. We're glad you're here and look forward to a great meeting this evening for the city council. At this time Pastor Gene Amerson is here and he from New Beginnings Fellowship and we invite him to come up and give our invocation. Gene?
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this day. Thank you for this city that you've given us, oh God. We thank you for those who serve faithfully here. We pray that you would be with us in this meeting, that you would give us wisdom and understanding and knowledge and that you would speak to us this evening. I pray, oh God, that you would have peace in our midst and I pray that you be glorified in all that we do. So Lord, we ask your blessing in your presence here. In the precious name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Really appreciate it. Mr. Chip Egger, who's the interim director of the Dennison Park Recreation Department, is going to do our pledge of allegiance this evening. Mr. Egger?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and responsible, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. At this time, it's a pleasure to have a proclamation for the Americans with Disabilities Act. And ladies, if y'all would come forward and meet me at the podium.
Thank you for subwaying here tonight. And this is Aiko and we're getting well equipped and our proclamation, whereas on the July 26, 1990, President George H.W. H.W. was signed into law, the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. This legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities and to make sure that people with disabilities have the same rights and opportunities as everyone else. And whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing full participation in community life. Now, our little core promise of ADA will only be breached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement the ADA. And whereas, on July 26, 2024, celebrates the 34th day of this mercenary of Americans with Disabilities Act, and the city of Dennison celebrates and recognizes the progress that has been made by reaffirming its resources of equality and inclusion, and we're committed to our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. And whereas, a committed work today is an opportunity to educate the public, raise awareness, and recognize the achievements and contributions of individuals with disabilities through our society. And whereas, numerous organizations in the city of Dennison and throughout the race of county work with constituents and committees to bring forward the promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the passage of the ADA. Now, therefore, I want to proclaim mayor of the city of Dennison, on behalf of the city council, encourage all residents to join in this observation by participating in activities and events that promote the understanding, respect, and inclusion, and by reaffirming our commitment to the full realization of the goals of the ADA and do hereby proclaim July 26, 2024, as Americans with Disabilities Act where it's day. In witness thereof, I guarantee to set my hand and possibly fix the seal of the city of Dennison on this first day of July, 2024. Ladies, we present this proclamation and we thank you for all of you for our entire duty. Thank you so much.
We come to item three on our agenda, which is public comments. Citizens may speak on items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to city clerk upon arrival and prior to the council reaching the public comment section of the agenda. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to the public hearings listed below will be heard when a specific hearing starts. Are there any requests to speak cards? Okay, there being none, we'll move forward. The agenda, item number four is the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Second by Councilman Redwine. Motion made by Mayor Protem Adams. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time, we'll move forward. Number five, public hearings. Ms. York.
Good evening, mayor and council. The first item I have for you tonight is a request to rezone property located at 215 South US Highway 75 from the commercial district within the highway oriented and corridor overlay district to a planned development overlay district within the highway oriented and corridor overlay district. The proposed PD or planned development will allow for the use of metal building material for the facade of an existing building located on the property. The property has been developed as an auto dealership for Blake Utter Ford. The proposed, or I'm sorry, as the property falls within the highway overlay, you may be aware that the ordinance requires that the building facades be constructed out of 100% masonry. The applicant has come forward requesting the PD in order to accommodate utilizing Ford Motors' new signature MV design, which incorporates aluminum composite material, or ACM for those that know what that means, on the front facade of the existing building. This was a way to allow for that construction material to be used within the highway overlay. It's similar to how we moved forward with the auto dealership to the south. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request at their meeting held on June 25th and staff does recommend the approval of the request as well. There were no additional deviations or development standards established by the planned development. It was solely created for the purpose of the material or the use of the material. And I'm present for any questions you may have and so is the applicant.
All right. Any questions? This is a public hearing. We now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against item number 5A? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from council? Any comments? All right. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I would move to approve the subject property being rezoned to a planned development zoning district for the use of metal building material for the facade of the building.
Second.
By, a motion made by Mayor Protem, a second by Councilman Thomas. Are there any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, the next item is 5B. And this, I'll turn it over to Ms. York.
Thank you, mayor. This public hearing, I believe, was tabled at the city council meeting on June 17th and so we are continuing that public hearing tonight. City staff has received a voluntary annexation application for property located at the corner of FM 84 and State Highway 91, or the northeast corner, I should say. This is an aerial view of that subject property. Just for reference, that is Asa Alboy or what used to be Quickset, just kind of to the northwest and then US 69 and Munson Park are to the east. The request for this annexation consists of 52 acres and they are asking that this acreage be brought into the city limits so that they can pursue a planned development for this acreage as well as the additional acreage for properties adjacent to this. That zoning request for the planned development, mixed-use development, is a companion item on this agenda and with that, staff does recommend approval of this voluntary annexation request and I'm present for any questions that you may have and the applicant is here as well.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will reopen the public hearing from two weeks ago and invite anyone that has a comment. You're welcome to come forward at this time. And the yes ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Laniel Mesa. I live at 2201 North State Highway 91 in Dennison, directly across the street from this development. Our biggest concern is the intersection and the traffic that's going to be caused by an additional 610 units and a shopping center or whatever on the corner. Every day I see walkers, bike riders, new young kids driving to school, right up the street to the high school, people getting lost, boats, RVs, everything. It's a major traffic area and to add an additional 12 to 1500 cars on that intersection is just too much. So I would propose that that intersection be corrected to house that many additional cars before the construction starts. One other thing I want to comment on is item four in his proposition is the thoroughfare onto 91 is a four lane and that is a four lane for approximately two tenths of a mile. So 1,000 feet of that road is four lanes and the rest of it is merging into two lanes. So I would just request that before anything gets started, that the road and the intersection accommodate the needs for that type of community.
All right, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. And the representative for the company is here, Josh McKinney. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Josh McKinney with Measure Group, 1130 Vegabon Lane North, Plymouth, Minnesota. Mayor members of the council, I certainly can address this comment regarding traffic at this point, but I have an idea that there might be some other comments. So if you're all right, maybe I can address this one and then come up after that? Okay. So we completely agree with the resident that we need to study additional traffic on this proposal. So we are very, very, very early in the process. We've been working with city staff for over the better part of a year at least, but recognize right now, we're kind of at the rezoning stage that would allow us to undergo, you know, additional study on things like traffic, floodplain, so on and so forth. So the resident's concern is absolutely noted and certainly we'll have to involve people from Tech Dot and the city on the traffic study as well. So we have no interest in opening a project with substandard roadways or access points to us or for the neighbors as well. So completely understand the concern and would work to kind of incorporate the finding of the traffic study and the requisite professionals once they get involved.
Okay, thank you for that response, yes sir. Is there anyone else willing or interested in speaking for the public hearing? If not, Josh, do you want to mention anything else about the project? Maybe you could give a little better overview?
Yeah, so regarding the annexation, I mean, I guess I don't have any specific comments for the annexation. I have some additional comments, maybe after Ms. York kind of describes the project for council, if that's appropriate. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any public comments? Okay, we'll close the public meeting. So is there anything else that we need to discuss on this matter? It was approved by the planning and zoning.
So this is just for the annexation portion. We'll need to take action on the annexation and then I will present the zoning request.
Okay, thank you very much. Discussion by council on the annexation? Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance annexing the subject property. Second.
Motion by Councilman Massey, second by Councilman Thorne to approve the annexation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, Ms. York. Round two.
Thank you, sir. This case I bring before you is a request to not only rezone 154.70 acres, but to also initially rezone, or initially zone, excuse me, the 52 acres that were just annexed into the city. This is the aerial view of the entire subject property. As you can see, it is currently a portion of it outside the city limits and the portion that is inside the city limits is zone ag as well as multifamily two. The applicant is pursuing a planned development overlay district to allow for a mixed-use development for property that, as we mentioned, that's located at the corner, the northeast corner of FM 84 and State Highway 91. This planned development district will allow for multiple uses, including single-family detached, single-family attached, or as we know, townhomes, multifamily, not industrial, and commercial uses. The planned development establishes base zoning districts as well as allowable acreage for each of these uses. A full list of the development standards are listed as backup in this agenda. I'm not going to go over those. I will say the applicant utilized the base zoning district development standards pretty tightly. I will say that in addition to calling out specific standards so that they are secured with this ordinance, they also establish specific architectural standards for each use and those architectural standards are different for each use. A landscape and screening requirement shall conform to the provisions set in Section 28.51 of the zoning ordinance as well as Section .53 for the screening requirements. And the PD does establish additional landscape requirements between the commercial and multifamily district that you see kind of at the southwest corner of this property. Open space requirements are listed, that are listed within the townhome section of our ordinance as well as the multifamily two section are going to hold for this ordinance. And in addition to the acreage that are required for those two zoning districts, the applicant has stated that approximately 45 acres, or a minimum of 45 acres will be dedicated as open space for this development. It could potentially be more, given that there's a floodplain there, but for sure 45 at a minimum. And all open spaces will be maintained by a property owners association. As we've kind of already discussed, there are traffic concerns for this area. Upon zoning approval, additional applications will be required of the applicant and those must be submitted to staff, reviewed, and approved by the appropriate bodies. And those applications include preliminary plats, which a traffic impact analysis or a traffic study will be required at that time and that'll be reviewed and approved through the civil engineering plan review process, which are also required, where they'll have to provide information related to drainage and ensure that there are no adverse effects from construction around that floodplain. Site plans are also required, but those are way further down the road. The comprehensive plan mostly calls for this area to be developed in a neighborhood manner. However, given the mixed-use development along with the large portion of residential uses, staff does recommend approval of their request, given that those commercial uses or industrial uses are located along major thoroughfares. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of this request at their meeting held on June 11th and I'm present for any questions that you may have and so is the applicant.
Ms. York, can you bring that map up again?
This one?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Where's the site for future intermediate schools? Isn't it in close proximity off 84?
Yes, sir. It's going to be somewhere across the street.
Okay. Got you. Got you. Do you know if we have any plans currently for the traffic light or?
I don't, I don't, I'm not aware of that. They are, while they are going through the process, I have not reviewed any of their plans. They are a little ahead of this project. Whatever the traffic impact analysis for the school district will come out with, that'll be what is required at that time. However, given the new construction of this school as well as in addition to this development, if approved, that their study may require a lot more, will most likely require a lot more, if I'm being honest.
So since this is public, just if you can clarify what we are approving today in a planned development is the ability to use this residentially appropriated property for a mixed-use option to be determined in the future what that mixed-use for. This is a rendering of the existing plan to be modified through further staff audit.
That is correct. I will say that if this concept plan is changed drastically, while there are, the ordinance does allow for minimum or for like very small details to be changed, roadways a little bit, lesser lots not exceeding what is proposed here, staff can make administrative approval for those kind of changes. However, if there are significant changes or they shift one use from the north to the south, that would require an amendment to an approved PD or planned development.
Quick question on the floodplain. It appears in the rendering that that is assumed to be a larger water feature in the property. I'm guessing that is artistic license at this point. It's simply a muddy bog in the river basin.
I would, I'm sure he could allude to that a little bit more, but I think that through our conversations, that's definitely a draw for that open space area and I'm not sure how much of that he intends to reclaim if any, but I believe it's going to be used for open space, but Josh, you may be able to expand on that.
Ma'am, I have one more question for you and that is, where on this map is your property concerned?
Directly across the street on 91. We're at the corner, basically, this is my husband, brother-in-law, and sister-in-law. We're at the corner of 91 and 84.
And have what you heard today addressed your concerns?
I always have concerns because I hear, yes, we'll address them, but then actually seeing that they're addressed is going to be a different story and then what's going to become of it. But mostly, I mean, I, the walkers, the bike riders, and the young kids going to the high school. We have major wrecks there all the time and I would hate to see so much more traffic impede that area so that we can't even get out of our driveway or that they think that a two-lane road is really going to be. I would love to stay a two-lane road, but yeah, that's not going to, not going to be possible for that area. So and again, the shopping center, which will be directly across the street from us, cars going in and out of there, it's going to be a major, major undertaking and I just want to make sure that any traffic concerns are done ahead of the traffic that's going to be coming in.
So I share your concerns. I lived through Frisco as a 20,000 resident community into what it is the Monster today and was part of the process along the way to make sure that we were walkable and bikable and we're not always successful. In fact, the reason I left there in part was because we had so many school zones I had to drive through to get to any major highway. And as the residential county seat, so to speak, relative to our industrial-based southern neighbor, it seems like this is kind of the trend we're going towards. So I appreciate the feedback and the accountability, but rest assured that what we're attempting to do here today is say, is it allowed for us to build something that is not simply residential or simply commercial? We're going to do something that is more the live-work-play kind of model and then now we fine tune it with staff to make sure that it is safe for the residents, not only the ones we have today, but also the ones that we have in the future. So your voice is heard, thank you.
Thank you.
Josh, would you like to address this?
Yeah, thanks so much again.
Okay. At this time, we will reopen the public meeting that was tabled two weeks ago.
Fantastic. Thanks again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A couple of things, and Ms. York took a whole bunch of what I was going to say relative to the many, many steps we have yet to do here. And so we're, you know, looking forward to kind of undertaking, you know, pretty significant engineering studies, both on, you know, from a grading and drainage standpoint, floodplain, traffic, you know, utility sizing and, you know, depth standpoint. We've got a bunch of work to do, we recognize that. But you're exactly right, we're trying to understand, is this something that the council will support before we undertake hundreds of thousands of dollars of engineering expenses to determine that? And so the one thing I would just mention is, you know, I would say this is, this plan, you know, we really tried to focus like uses where possible. You know, we've got some multifamily directly across the street to our south. We've got some, you know, industrial or some sort of manufacturing to the north. And then, you know, we're, you know, basically stepped down intensity wherever we felt we could. And then relative to traffic, I don't have any illusions that we wouldn't have some improvements to Texoma at least and likely, you know, some on to State Highway 91 as well. So the extent of those improvements are really going to be driven by that traffic study. And then council member Thomas, one of the things you were talking about was relative to a signal at the intersection of that new, I think, I believe it's Armstrong Drive running north-south, kind of midway through our site. You know, one of the things that that road theoretically would allow us to do is relieve some of the traffic off of 91 and the extent that a signal would be necessary, we would basically build off of the school's traffic report, determine, you know, at what point we trip a signal warrant and then, you know, within those two studies, figure out who's paying for what. I mean, it's really, at that point, it's really a discussion of, yep, there's math that tells us we need to signal there, not, you know, simply kind of anecdotal response. So look forward to digging into all of that. We're just a little bit early for those discussions. So I would stand for any other questions relative to the developer's intent or kind of what we're hoping to do here.
Are your proposed trails designed to service specifically the tenants of your property itself?
Yeah, you know, we're having discussions about that. That was the initial thought is that, you know, we've got a great piece of property that's very, it's got a lot of topography on it and has some trees that are absolutely gorgeous, so wanted to preserve as much of that as possible. And the more we got into it is like, well, maybe, maybe there is discussions we can have with the city further down the line of, is this something that the city has in their parks master plan or something that we want to, you know, work together on relative to a park dedication? We're open to those discussions. It has not been like, we don't have a final definitive answer, but we certainly have, you know, a significant amount of green space where we could program something and work in conjunction with the city if that was something that the city was looking for.
We've recently had a council member step down from his role on council and Mr. Hander was really focused on the green spaces and tying the parks in and that's a motive that I share. And in Frisco specifically, I saw several floodplains turned into a crushed gravel parking lot where it didn't impede a permanent structure, but allowed for parking on a seasonal basis for citizens to be able to use the parks area as we move forward with these PDs, as we start annexing more and more property. That's an area that I think our city would really benefit is if we had the ability for the public to appreciate the walking and the outdoor lifestyle that Dennison is really focused on.
Yeah, I think that'd be great and like I said, I would look forward to, you know, further conversations on what the city's parks perspective is specific to this area of town. We're open to those discussions.
Any other questions for Mr. McKinney?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment? Yes, sir. Please come forward. If you don't mind, just state your name and address for us, please, sir.
Name is George Mason. I live at 2117 Park Village in Dennison. I've read a few articles about this type of housing developments. I saw one down in Austin. I was really impressed with the concept, the different types of housing all together in one site. And I have to compliment you, sir, for preserving the wild areas in our property. I've seen too many times where a contractor goes in and just bulldozes everything. There's a creek running through it, they put a culvert in, you never know the creek's there again. That's a plus. I applaud you for that. If you are going to put the trails in, I recommend you put some more parking in because it's going to attract people. And if you want to see an example of what a wild area does to the neighborhood, take a drive down to Waterloo Lake. It's a prime example of how housing and wild areas can coexist. And the intersection, I assume those are both state highways. So I would hope that the state puts in some traffic control at that intersection. I drive up there often, going to the dam and other places, and I just kind of grit my teeth and get white knuckles going through that intersection. So hopefully it'll fix it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to make remarks? What I would say is, one of my thoughts is that we will work All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to make remarks? What I would say is, one of my thoughts is that we will work closely with the schools to be sure that it's a very safe highway. We just cannot do, cannot not do that. It's very important for our children and our schools to be safe, and I'm certain that as we work through the planned development, this isn't going to start construction next week. It's going to take months and maybe years, or over a year to get things straightened out. So I can assure you that we'll be in touch with the Dr. Kirkbride and the Dennison schools to be sure that this is a safe intersection for the, for the new school that's going there. Any other comments or questions, council? All right, we'll close the public meeting at this time. Any discussion from the council? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the proposed rezone request as well as the initial zoning request to the PD overlay district for the subject property to allow for a mixed-use development.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Massey, and a second by Councilman Thomas. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, the motion passes. Thank you, sir, and thank you all very much for your comments. We appreciate it. Item six, receive report, hold discussion, take action on ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of tax note series 2024 in principal amount of $3.86 million for the visitor's center. Ms. Osoboy.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm here this evening to discuss, or to request authorization for funding of the visitor's center at 321 West Main. Pricing occurred this morning on tax notes, which have a seven-year term, averaging payments of about $635,000 a year. Marty Schu with Hilltop Securities, she's our financial advisor, and she is here to explain the pricing and to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Welcome, Marty. How are you this evening?
I'm doing well.
Great. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Marty Schu with Hilltop Securities. As was mentioned, we represent the city as your financial advisor. So we put together this packet for you. On the sale, your tax notes were sold through a private placement, and what that means is various banks were invited to solicit, were solicited to provide a bid for the right to purchase your tax notes. It's a very quick and cost-effective sale method. It's common for shorter debt. Typically, banks don't want to commit their capital for anything longer term, at least at a fixed rate. So it's a very ideal sale method for a shorter term. And as you can see on the front page, we have a summary of all of the bids that you received. I'm very pleased to report that you received seven different proposals from six different banks. So one of the banks offered you multiple options relative to the prepayment option. Chase Bank came in with the lowest proposed true interest cost, TIC of a 4.11%. That'll be fixed for the seven-year term. There is no prepayment option on that. It is an excellent rate. To give you an idea, we like to see a minimum of three bids, so you're well above what we would consider for a successful sale. And I will note that as far as the bank market is concerned, it's been a little displaced over the last year and a half, especially with the bank failures. We have, and we've been in a period of, a prolonged period of an inverted yield curve where short-term rates are a little bit higher than long-term rates. So it's been unique for the bank market, but I will tell you that that is the best placement rate I have seen in a year. So I think you should be very pleased. Behind that, we've included a full set of the final numbers for you, so you can see what that rate translates to in dollars of the life of the bonds. Again, very quick and cost-effective sale method, as I mentioned, because you don't have to apply for and purchase a rating, you don't have to prepare a bond offering document, and you don't have to pay underwriting fees. But otherwise, they function as bonds, just like all your other debt. So they will then go through the attorney general for their approval. This is the final step of the bond issuance process, so by effectively adopting the ordinance before you tonight, you are locking this right into place and accepting this proposal, and you'll receive the funds on August 1st. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Ms. Marty, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Ms. Osoboy, anything else? And this is, this, we're talking about the building just across the street from us, the new visitor's center that will house Ms. Dow and others, and we're excited about that for our beautiful downtown area. Discussion from council? Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a motion. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of tax note series 2024 in the principal amount of $3,860,000 for the visitor's center project.
Second.
A motion by Mayor Prokem Adams, a second by Councilman Thorne. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you again, Marty. There is no need for an executive session tonight, so, yes, ma'am? Okay, oh, we sure do. Seven, the library courtyard project. And who was going to, okay, thank you. Come forward, please, sir.
Greetings. Thank you for being here. Hello, everyone. I'm Greg Mitchell, the library director for the Dennison Public Library. I came here to Dennison five years ago, and on the backside of our building was this little courtyard area. It was overgrown with weeds and had some debris in there, and it had to be locked up because during the night, people would maybe try to sneak in there from the alley and do bad things. And I looked at this, and I thought, well, frankly, it's kind of an eyesore, and I would like to do something with it. Well, competition with contractors and not being very high on their list, and COVID, and all kinds of obstacles kept kind of coming up in the way. And then finally, last year, I was talking to April Martin, who you've had up here with the ADA proclamation, and she works for Texas Workforce. And she lit up when I started to talk about wanting to do something with that space, and went to work on it, and lined up a collaboration between Dennison ISD, the high school students, and the special ed vocational program there, and Texas Workforce, and the good folks at Twin Oaks Nursery, who donated material, plants, and benches to us, and the library, and of course, our city's own Parks and Rec crew pitched in and did some really great things for us. And so today, we had the ribbon cutting at long last, and opened up our library courtyard garden. And I'm proud to say that it looks great, and it'll continue to look great, and even better as all of the plants mature and grow. And it's a great example of how we, as the city, can work collaboratively with others in the community to make something really nice happen. And I'm just as proud of those students as you could possibly imagine. Those kids pitched in and really, really worked for us. And Chip Eggers' crew came over and did marvelous things to make the water work, and put some paving out there and everything. So it's, it's something that's great. I invite you all to come over to the library, take a look at it, and maybe when the weather cools off a little bit, get a cup of coffee and sit out there and do some reading. It's a, it's a great thing, and I'm just, I'm just proud that we're able to do it, and proud of the partnership that brought this about. Thank you.
Fantastic. We just appreciate the staff of our library. You're an award-winning staff, and now you just keep on going. We appreciate so much, everyone at the staff. Thanks for the idea. What a great place to spend a few quiet moments and enjoy a good book or a period of it. So thank you very much.
I said it before, and I'll say it again, it's the best place I've ever worked. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate it, and we agree with you. We, we love our city staff. Thank you so much for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now, we have no reason for a executive committee meeting. So the time is now 6:40. We'll call this meeting adjourned, and hope everyone has a safe evening, and hope you have a great and safe 4th of July. And remember, July the 4th, right here, right behind us, two blocks from Nixon Stadium, 4th of July fireworks. Good evening, everybody. Have a great evening.